Yeah, there we go.
Pretty thorough.
It was exactly what was in your packet.
Yeah.
So if you read that, you're good.
Yeah.
All right, I call the meeting of the Leavenworth City Council to order for June tenth. We stand for pledge of allegiance. And you want to start us, Pete?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To true republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Sharon Waters.
Clint Strand.
Anne Hessler.
Zeke Reister.
Shane there.
Mike Fardar.
I would entertain a motion to excuse Travis who's traveling.
Second.
Seconded by Shannon, seconded by Zeke. Alvin Weber, let me see your hands. He is excused. We have one item to add to the consent agenda before we ask you to approve it. And that's the project acceptance of the Public Works Mobile Office building. Again, it's pretty standard. There is no nothing other than just an acceptance of it. So we would put it into consent agenda unless somebody feels like they've got questions or something about it. Otherwise, I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda, consent agenda as amended.
Second.
Move. I would entertain a motion.
Yeah.
Are you going to move?
Well, I didn't. I didn't know.
Oh, I was moving as, as without amendment.
I moved to the consent agenda as amended.
Second.
Okay, now we got my movie and Sharon seconded. All those in favor, let me see your hands. Passage unanimously.
I would make the motion.
We'll move on then. Again, as always, I just like to state that we are here and respectful of each other. Acknowledged throughout our meeting time, it's okay to disagree. Prior to making comments, must be recognized by the chair. Please address the council as a whole and not individuals. Keep comments focused on a topic that's being discussed unless you're making comments. The items not on the agenda. And with that, we will move to comments from the public on items not on the agenda. Do you have something they wish? Is there anybody online?
Just a consultant.
Comments? I'm seeing none. We'll move on. I do have a proclamation to read. June is ride transit month, and we are so fortunate to have such a strong transit system in our little town. I want to acknowledge that by reading this proclamation, declaring the month of June as ride transit month here in Leavenworth. Whereas the City of Leavenworth City Council acknowledges that public transportation plays a vital role in connecting people to jobs, schools, healthcare, and essential services. Ensuring that all members of our community have access to opportunity. And whereas riding transit helps reduce traffic congestion, lower greenhouse gas emissions, contributes to a cleaner, more sustainable environment. And whereas the link transit system is powered by dedicated drivers, operatives, maintenance staff, and planners who work tirelessly to keep our community moving safely and efficiently. And whereas increasing transit ridership supports economic development, fosters equitable access, and strengthens the social fabric of our neighborhoods. And whereas Ride Transit Month offers an opportunity to celebrate public transit, recognizes benefits, and invite our community to explore new ways of getting around. Therefore, be it proclaimed by the mayor and city of Leavenworth City Council, the month of June is Ride Transit Month. The city of Leavenworth encourages all its residents, businesses, and visitors to support and participate in this initiative by choosing transit and celebrating its many benefits for our community and our future. Sign this tenth day of June twenty twenty five. And I don't believe we've got somebody here.
Yeah, Anne.
Anne, you can, you can take this for us.
I simply can.
Oh, you're gonna get a picture of me giving this to you. Oh, Anne, that's what you get.
I'm no Nick Covey, but.
I know. But here you are.
Excellent.
They're gonna get the water bottle out of the pitcher.
You can drop it.
Awesome. Link will be really happy to have this when I see them at their board meeting.
Yep.
All right. Our next item is actually a public hearing on annexation of property at in West Benton Street. And maybe we'll provide the staff report and then followed by the public comments. And again, just to remind earth that please come to the microphone and state your name and address to be included in the public record. And all comments addressed to the city council relevant to the topic and should not be of a personal nature. This is not a time to ask questions. It's a time to make comments. And with that, we'll open our public hearing at seven oh six. Thank you.
Thank you, man. I did have a presentation all ready for you, and I'm having technical difficulties. So I'm just going to verbally and not show you my presentation. I apologize. Tonight, you're being asked to consider a request for annexation of property located at the east of West Benton Street. This is a sixty percent annexation request by Adam Fleeger, the property owner. I did have an inaccurate number in your, in the write-up. It is point six nine, six, seven acres, not point four nine acres. That was my mistake. This property is located in the city's urban growth area in the multifamily zoning district. This parcel is a legal lot of record. Its current configuration was authorized by Shland County via a boundary line adjustment in twenty twenty four. The property owner is requesting annexation in order to provide the property with city water and sewer services for future development. This was brought before the council on May thirteenth during the regularly scheduled meeting. And the council agreed to consider this annexation and move it forward. The petition of annexation was routed to the assessment office for determination of sufficiency. And I did receive that notification that was added to your packet as well. This notice was also posted on the property in three locations and the hall boards on May twenty seventh, twenty twenty five. I have the packet materials under top seven. This includes the application file record. This includes the petition for annexation, the notice of intention, and all the public notice documents as well as a determination of sufficiency. I do know the applicant is here today and is available to speak, and I am here if you have any questions.
All right, any questions, sir? Thank you.
Yes. At what point does someone declare if they're doing multifamily units, if they're going to use the multifamily tax exemption?
I would expect that to be when they submit for a building permit application.
Okay, when they go further down the road.
Yes.
Yeah, all right, just second here.
Top of the tent of the parcel. The goal would be to develop a single family residence.
So why don't you go ahead and come up?
Okay.
Sure.
Yeah.
Come up there. Yeah, right up here and give us your name and address.
My name is Adam Fleeger. I have an address, Field Lot Twenty Two. This particle doesn't have an address. Seeking collaborative solutions on the parcel is working with the city to annex it or our school or a family address. The goal would be to build a single family residence.
Okay.
Any other questions?
I could vote yes. A multifamily tax exemption. Was there an issue about how the water, you want to access the water? Like how it's going to get, are you going to get tied into the city's water system?
Yeah, the water main is right there on Main and Mill Street. And there are a couple of different working solutions towards acquiring tapping into that main. One could be an easement on Chester Marlin property as a single residential line. Working with the city to determine that the best life working option, but there are other options. But it's going down the extension of West Benton Street where there already is a residential water line.
So Adam, is that the, is one going with Chester Marlin, is that the one you would prefer? Is that the one you're going to go for first or primary?
Personally, I think it would, it would make, it would, I prefer to go down the extension of West Benton. The one issue that we that's challenged to the cost of if we had to make that a main, a water main, which drastically changes the cost of what would be a full residential building at that site. And so since there's already water line in going down the middle of that gravel extension of West Benton, that would be my preferred, but that would be a determination of city administration on where they like the water line. Chester and I have a working easement and a plan if we need to go through this property for a water easement. But that would be, you know, tearing up a little bit. It's pretty well maintained backyard, but you know, he wants to work with me.
Okay. So it's a city's determination?
Cool, yeah.
Okay. Excellent.
Other questions?
We've been able to figure out driveway access.
That'd be West Benton. Right. Work with the city on a working solution for that.
Well, you would need an easement though for access from your neighbor, wouldn't you?
Yeah, and yeah, there's that really weird pie slice that got incorporated when that UGA or the boundary line adjustment happened on that parcel with the slip up from previous owners. But I've been in contact. We have that also easement written up and waiting on part in the process. So they're amenable to that, and it's been written and drawn. So waiting for an application for, we do it for some driveway easements. But it's really small.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Anybody online?
Thanks, Adam. I'll just keep.
Okay. If there's no other questions, we'll close the public comment portion of public hearing.
Oh, somebody's.
Mr. Mayor.
Oh, yeah. Oh, we got a question. Well, come on up. I didn't see you.
Hi there. My name is Amanda Tau. I live at two oh three West Benton Street, so just down the street. And you will also know that I'm T I S analyst on Douglas County. So I look at maps. That's really cool for me. And I didn't notice that the property that is to the front of this property that's being considered for annexation. Part of it is in the city, but part of it is also in the county. Is there going to be any work towards getting that entire parcel into the city? Because right now, as it is, that is a very thin, like we're talking a matter of feet boundary. And I tell you, mapping that is going to be impossible. It will be ugly when someone who has to map it goes to do so. So my recommendation as a neighbor and as a professional who does mapping is that we somehow work to get the neighbor at one line included in the bound sometime so that that boundary gets cleaned up. And so that is.
Thanks, Amanda.
Thanks, Amanda.
I can comment on it. That is, that is a goal to have that cleaned up. We are aware of the issue. Because this was a request by an owner for sixty percent annexation. We were, we had a timeline to adhere to, so we're moving it forward. But that is something we do want to clean up. It's being taxed as a city lot, but it's it's wonky. So I'm working through that and yeah.
Yeah. I have experience in Douglas County cities, towns where this happens. And yes, that is what happens is that whole parcel gets incorporated into one or the other for tax purposes. But that's also really not fair. And so just it needs to be cleaned up.
Yes, we are aware. Appreciate your
Maggie, is this, is this a difficult issue? I mean, it seems like.
Something I just, either we need to pursue and, and move forward. It's just a different, different processes. If it's city initiated versus initiated by the property owner, it's easier when it's initiated by the property owner. So it's just working.
And the status quo is they're being taxed as a city lot. The only challenge is just that it's wonky and that it's difficult to map.
It needs to get cleaned up.
Yeah, okay.
It really does. And that's, it's caused by boundary line adjustment after boundary line adjustment between the city and the UGA. And that's what causes those wonky lines.
And so is this the only problem, I guess, you'd say?
No, there's, I'm sure there's more. What I would like, I know there's interest by some other owners in this vicinity that would like to potentially annex in the future. And at that point, it might be a good time to talk with the surrounding property owners and, and that. But I haven't had any other applications.
So this is an application to be in the city limits? Okay.
Okay, now if there's no other comments, questions, I'll close this public hearing at seven eighteen. And seeing no problems with, from the council with this moving forward or bringing importance. Is it next time? Yeah. At your next meeting. All right. Next, I will open public hearing on the twenty twenty six to twenty thirty one six year transportation improvement plan. Again, it's a public hearing, so please, if you have any comments, come to the podium and state your name and address for the public record. And we'll start with Andy giving the staff report. And I'll open this public hearing at seven eighteen.
And it's actually going to be Bradley that speaks that.
Okay, Bradley, yes.
Thank you, Mayor, City Council. I just wanted to take this opportunity to present to you the six-year transportation improvement plan. This information was presented in your package for the last city council meeting back in May, May twenty seventh, I believe it was. And the only difference is we basically reformatted the chart and made it a little clearer when the actual projects will appear. Basically sorted about by year when we're planning on creating the project. And I'd be happy to go through each project individually, or we could just kind of discuss it at a high level. I guess the preference would be, what would you like?
We did review this fairly thoroughly and first time, so I think high level for me is fine.
Yeah.
So the first project is the multi-level mixed-use parking structure. That project is currently underway. We're actually in the process of selecting a consultant to do the work next week. So we're moving forward with that one as we speak. The second project on the list is a roundabout highway to a bicycle road. It's a gateway feature where, you know, we will be working with great transit to place a structure in the roundabout to kind of draw attention to, hopefully, you know, have a variant being to. I, we haven't done too much work on this one yet, so.
This one's actually a future step session for you to give us direction of whether or not you want us to pursue a gateway feature.
I thought we couldn't.
We can.
Because there's not.
The next one is park and study improvements, just signage, the parking across the city. Number four is parking lot improvements. Basically doing some ADA landscaping improvements to several parking lots located throughout the city.
I have a question about that. So this is specifically calls out the Asgard Blue improvements. And that is, I understand, a likely location for a parking garage, which is, I'm just wondering if there is the timing of design, you know, strategy for the parking garage before we spend a million dollars to do work on, let's say, five hundred goes to one of those lots that becomes a parking garage. Is, is that money going to be wasted? Or are we going to maybe temper our enthusiasm a little bit for that lot in anticipation of developing it?
We've done nothing to date. Okay, so.
So it's a consideration.
Yes, okay. Next project on the list is Mine Street, Mill Street improvements. Basically, we're looking at providing pedestrian and bicycle improvements and also repairing the pavement along these streets. Some pretty obvious places.
So Bradley, are you thinking of a bicycle path on this, on Mill and Mine Street? This is bike you know, pedestrian bicycle facilities, pavement improvement. We just don't have pavement improvement.
I honestly, we'll, we'll get it. You know, this project, we haven't started in design work, haven't really started any planning work on it yet, but that's something that's.
The ways off.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay.
Hopefully Adam trenches his water before.
The next project on the list, project number six, is Ski Hill Active Transportation Improvement Phase Two. This is a I sort here mixed up. This project, we're actually doing design work currently on the, on this project. And we're planning on awarding the contract next spring and construction next summer. So this one, it's underway, all the design work, all the right away work is coming away. But we will, yeah, do the construction the next year. That's what I tried to engage in this, this phase.
So that's going to go just up to, from Evans to Pine, right?
Correct, up to Pine Street. And it'll look essentially like the phase one.
Right, right.
Okay.
Second, excuse me, project number seven is sidewalk addition commercial street. Hey, Paul, thanks.
Sorry.
Again, looking at a new sidewalks out towards the Chatham Park and along those and roads back in that residential area where they were. Next project is Autumn Stross Extension. This is Chumstick Titus Road. So I, this is a title of Leavenworth Meadows. And I don't know if anybody's driven up there recently. The developer has paved approximately halfway across the site. Next step is the C is going to basically complete that road over to Titus along with the, the multi-use paths. That's on there.
I have another question. I've heard from community members that they're pretty sure there's going to be a gate there. It's not going to be a through street. And my understanding is it actually is going to be a street that's accessible to the public. What, what is the reality?
So there's two phases right now. The way it's going to be left by the developers is that there will be a gate. We actually just talked about that today with emergency access so that the gates could be opened and that could just be used as a dirt road. Otherwise, once, once the city does, they'll get it. It will be a the developer would be dedicating all that effort. Does that answer your question?
Yep.
Okay.
So it's both and?
Yes.
Next project on the list is Pine Street Phase Two, Titus Road to Chumstick. Basically sidewalks, stormwater improvements, water, sewer. And it also includes the Chumstick First Street Roundabout. So end of end of Pine Street. Yeah, that's where it is in that location there. Next project is Central Avenue Sidewalk Extension, Evan Street to Pine Street. Again, sidewalks, saving routes for schools. Let's see, next one, Ford Stross River Bend Interception Improvement Planning. Planning study, basically looking at improving the traffic flow of location. I, it's, you guys have been out there. It's pretty bad at times, so.
So was there any specific things yet as far as improving the traffic flow, Bradley, or we just?
Do we know about all sorts of settings? I think it's pretty bad. But I think we're just looking at, you know, trying to figure out there's some perspective ways to safely deal with all the traffic, especially with Laquita and the climbing wall.
Lots going on.
Apartments. I don't, my personal opinion, and maybe I'm a little out of bounds here. I, I don't think the infrastructure that's there now doesn't support the traffic.
So would you say that again?
So the infrastructure, the roadway is there now. I don't think it supports the traffic volumes that we see currently. That's, you know, this planning study will go in there and, you know, look at all those issues and try to come up with some solutions.
Hmm. So that's something we, we contract with somebody.
Yes, 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 absolutely.
Okay. Okay.
Thirty thousand, it's kind of fifty. There's a few minor adjustments.
Possibly.
Next project on the list is River Bend Drive, Ward Strop. Side. Is that the same name?
No.
No, okay, sorry, sorry. River Bend Drive, Ward Strop Sidewalk Improvements. Just sidewalks in that area. Definitely needs it. Short Street Reconstruction Project. Basically between the Channel Park and Joseph Street. And you know. I, well, I, I just want to leave you with that. The next project is a front street pedestrian positive. That's going to be a very large project and definitely looking forward to working on that project. Next project is Annual Street Maintenance. This is just, every year we're targeting spending sixty, sixty thousand dollars a year to make improvements to the residential streets. Don't have the specific locations identified at this point in time, but that's one of the things that Andy and I are going to start working on is going out there and trying to find the worst spots and trying to address those on a year-over-year basis.
Is this more of a cosmetic thing, like the chip seal kind of approach, or is it more of a substantial? But do you know yet? It's not the rebuild, yeah.
Yeah, certainly sixty grand a year is not going to allow to build much, but certainly there's some pretty major dips in areas where, you know, basically the subgrade is doesn't exist anymore, play on.
Right.
So it may be that we go in there and fix fewer, larger locations, or maybe we would do a chip seal over, you know, a stretch of of the roadway. We just have to go in and analyze it, you know, what we have, the data that we have at present time.
Okay.
Then the next one is residential street reconstruction integrated capital improvement plan. So this, this is kind of a placeholder. There's, one of the issues that we have in the city is a lot of our water systems fairly old and sewer systems and stormwater, play on this lead. And when we go in there and replace those, you know, pieces of infrastructure, a lot of times in the past, what we've done is just basically patch the road. So you have trench cuts all over the river. What we're trying to do is set aside some money that when we go in there and make these repairs to the the water line to align and whatnot, instead of just patching it, actually fixing the entire, you know, stretch that we actually, you know, impacted for construction.
Right. Right. So this is part of where the money is for the increased water rates, right?
Exactly.
Yes.
When you start doing.
Why it's gonna go.
Right, okay.
Um, and the next, next two projects on the list are fairly notional at this point in time. Regional Pathways Plan, uh, Project Working. Basically, there's some discussion about bringing a multi-use pathway between Lenworth and Shetland. I've seen and heard different, um. Different locations for that, but I don't think anything has been formalized or defined, uh, but that's, there's something else already are and will support. Uh, get to that point. And then the next one is US Two Pedestrian Underpass. And again, that's, you know, it's several years down the road. Will be really addressed or, uh, chaffing, take on that project.
All right. Can I ask you a question on number ten?
Something else with the money?
You got some ideas, though.
Yeah.
I'm gonna ask a question on number ten. I meant to, and it's shuffled by me and I didn't catch it. The construction of new sidewalk on Central Avenue, which is both beside my house.
Right.
And is it gonna be on the other side?
We are not to that point yet.
Okay, so does that mean that the edge of my property could be a sidewalk? Because it's not my property.
In the right way.
So. Okay.
It's possible. We, we haven't looked at any, you know, where, honestly, I haven't looked at where, where it makes the most sense to close that sidewalk. At this point in time.
It doesn't make sense to do it on my side. I mean, as people would be literally able to look at my bedroom window.
Time for some good curtains.
Yeah.
Blackout curtain.
Thanks.
Thanks, Randy.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions or? Nobody answered, nobody wants to. All right, seeing none, I'll close this public hearing at seven thirty-two. Interesting. I'm here, she's.
Yeah.
All right, on to our resolutions, ordinances, orders, and others business. Resolution sixteen, twenty twenty-five, Maggie.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I have, um, Katie, which she's our consultant, uh, with BHC. On, on the line tonight, um, to give you a little update as well, but as part of our twenty twenty-six periodic update. And, um, the grant that we received from Commerce, uh. We have a contract with BHC to, um, complete our Conference of Planned Land Use and Housing Technical Appologies. Uh, this is part of a two, two-part grant with fifty thousand awarded this year and another fifty thousand over the next two years. Uh. And so in order to receive this grant disbursement, we need the council to accept the work of being completed. Um, tonight you are not accepting or you're not adopting anything, you're just accepting that the work has been completed. Um, this, the technical appendices that are in your packet, um, can be modified in the future, um, as we add and, and. Get more, uh. Information, um, but they have fulfilled their contract, so this is just acknowledging that. Um, Katie is here to answer questions because there is a lot of information in there.
Yeah.
Um, and so I just wanted to make it very clear that you're not adopting anything tonight, you're just accepting that they have completed the work for our contract. And then I can, Katie, if I can, um. If, if you wanna fill in on anything, or if we just wanna open it up for any questions, um, before making the motion. Uh, from the council.
Questions? One question I guess I had was. We were talking about this earlier, Maggie, about city property. Are they gonna come even closer? Are they, is that part of their description to assess? Buildability, I guess, on certain city property? I showed my say, we took the Brown Snake Hill and said, hey, we've got almost two acres here. It's just. It's a functional way to use it. Uh, is that part of their design? Is that not that?
That's a little more specific. They did a land capacity analysis, um. And Katie, I can let you speak, you.
Sure. Yeah, so we did a land capacity analysis, um, basically measuring. The existing capacity for jobs and housing and we, um. Actually excluded anything that was owned by the city because we made the assumption that. If it was owned by the city, it was not intended for use, um, for jobs or housing. So in the future, if, if that, um, if the city did have plans to use city-owned land for housing. Uh, we could always adjust the capacity, but essentially. We look at all of the vacant and underdeveloped properties in the city and, uh, see whether they. Could take on potential housing development. Or commercial development that would support job growth. So, um. I believe we, we did not include city-owned properties in that analysis, and we also excluded. Properties that were in wetlands or otherwise undevelopable.
So I guess I'd like to see us actually consider. The housing, the property up on the Round Snake Hill, because that was one of the targets for the Housing Advisory Group. Was can this be, that was definitely an area of interest, because it's, it's still the land and.
That's really independent of, of this work, really.
Well, they said there was another phase you're gonna go through.
Well. Yeah, this is.
So I know we're not gonna do it in this phase, but if it's, she said there's additional things you're gonna take a look at.
These, these are, um, an assessment. And it's not a prescriptive. This isn't, this isn't.
Yeah, I get that part. What I'm saying is the other fifty thousand dollars, can that be used to look at this property? We don't have to answer that tonight, I just.
I mean, this is just the big overarching.
Right.
These are just the technical appendices for what, a- as it exists now, what's our housing and land use capacity? Uh, we don't know that that's gonna become anything. It's still zoned appropriately, um, it's just wasn't included as.
Yeah, I get.
It is not gonna change. I don't know how to say that.
This, this part of the comprehensive planning process, which is a state, um, mandate that we have to update our comprehensive plan periodically, that's what this is. What you would like to do is an allowable use of our affordable housing funds. To hire someone to go out and determine the feasibility of developing housing on the two acres that you're describing. Completely separate from a comprehensive plan that's looking at the, the community as a whole, not going down to the personal level.
Okay, so that isn't a function of this.
It is not a function of this comprehensive planning process.
Sounded kind of, maybe it was, but now I get it that it's not. But at some time, I don't want to lose, I don't want that taken off the list because I think that is every potential. Feasibility place for a ha- you know, for housing.
And that's what we're working, like you said, with the Housing Committee and those are the things, that's the place that goes things. But they're inconsistent with our concept of comprehensive plan, and that's what this is about, is giving us a comprehensive plan. That then we can dive into with those kind of specifics and say, yeah, it fits with our comprehensive plan. So, but this is, yeah, they're two different kind of levels, I guess.
Okay.
I have a question.
I would just add that the, um, the idea of doing a feasibility. Analysis for a specific property isn't, isn't quite the scale that we're doing right now and, and, um. The capacity that we're talking about is purely based on number of acres and the zoning, so. It wouldn't be too hard to unders- understand what the, you know, the number of acres of that parcel and the zoning would allow, that's just a number. So if we wanted to amend the analysis just, just to add, you know. Fifteen more units or twenty or whatever it is, that wouldn't be very hard to do, but we wouldn't be looking at. Actually a feasibility of developing that site right now.
Okay. Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
I have a question on page, pages eight, nine, uh, I'm confused about some of the data, maybe you can help make sense of it. Uh, the rent, median rent, uh, in Lebanon shows in two thousand thirteen was nine hundred dollars. And in two thousand twenty-three was eight hundred and eighty-four, that our rents went down over that ten-year span. But then the next chart down in page nine shows. That the fair market rent of a studio is nine hundred and eighty-one dollars, which is higher than what your data says is the median rent. And all, all of the fair market rents are higher than that, so. Wonder if you can help me make sense of how that.
Mm-hmm.
How that makes sense.
Great question. Um, I'm trying to look at it right now, uh, with you. My guess would be that, uh. That. It's possible that median rents did drop and that could be as a result of, um. You know, a new development coming online or something else going on in the market. They're also, it's also possible that. Um, different data sources were used for those different numbers. Uh, but I can look into that and, and get back to you if you want me to. I don't, I don't have an answer right off the top of my head. I'd have to look at the data.
It just seems like it'd be useful, right? You know, housing is a pretty, pretty big issue here and to have accurate numbers there would be nice, uh. I don't believe that our rents went down over that. And I don't think the median rent is eight hundred and eighty-four dollars, so, um, it seems like we should, we should get that figured out.
Eighty hundred and eighty, eight hundred dollars per bedroom, maybe.
Well, that's what I'm worried about. Yeah, if there was an asterisk there with some sort of, uh, you know, justification, I just lost it.
Yeah, per room at double occupancy.
Don't get the bathroom, not the room.
Yeah, it does look like the, the first table on page eight is from the ACS data. Uh, which is a, a five-year census, um, analysis and that, or a data set, and then. The exhibit ten, I think, is what you were talking about with the, with the fair market rent of nine eighty-one. Um, that was from the, a different data source, the Low Income Housing Coalition, and it was also. A Shalane County number, so, you know, we're pulling together a lot of different sources of data to try to create a story and, um. I, I understand sometimes it doesn't quite, the, the thread gets lost, but we can look into that for sure to clarify.
Good point. Excellent. Any other questions? I wish entertain a motion to just, again, to accept. This plan, and I believe there is a deadline, right? So we need to, yeah, right. We need to accept the plan in order to get the money to pay for the plan.
Blown, City Council moves to approve Resolution sixteen dash twenty twenty-five. Accepting the work completed by BHC Consulting in directing the twenty twenty-six comprehensive planned land use and housing appendices.
Thank you.
Okay, we're by Anne, seconded by Shane. Any other questions?
I just, just following up to my earlier question, uh, approving. That this, this work was done, it's, uh, doesn't mean we aren't gonna get a follow-up on.
Right, no, right, right. No.
We're fortunate that BHC is doing our full, this was, this was a separate grant, and then we have. We've actually consulted with them for the whole project, so we'll be working with them over the next year and we can get those questions answered. We're not adopting. So we'll make sure we follow on.
Cool, thank you, Maggie.
Any other questions? All those in favor, let me see your hands. Passes unanimously. Um, action item seventeen, twenty twenty-five, our six-year transportation improve, improvement plan.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, so apparently walked through. Uh, that was the sixth, the twenty twenty-six, twenty thirty-one, six-year transportation improvement, um. And here, if you have any questions, or I should say, we're here.
You're gonna go through it again?
Yeah.
You know it, Ben.
Lenworth City Council moves to approve Resolution seventeen dash twenty twenty-five, accepting the twenty twenty-six, the twenty thirty-one six-year. Transportation Improvement Plan.
So good.
Moved by Shane, seconded by Anne. Any other questions?
Question would be, um, simply that. Level of service doesn't show up in this, that's not part of the transportation plan, or the comprehensive plan, right?
Yeah, the transportation. The plan.
Okay.
Right, this is just our list of projects that have to show up on this plan in order for us to try for funding.
Right.
And we can modify it too, so this is not fixed in stone, as you know. Any other questions? All those in favor, let me see your hands. And passes unanimously. Um, action, item number eleven, Resolution eighteen, twenty twenty-five, also Andy.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, I guess the park's policy that was, uh, presented to you in a study session, I think, two days ago. And the only real change, uh, was the fact that we received on the. Commercial use in all other city parks that are not park-street parks, so that definition was expanded. To allow for community enrichment purposes, including but not limited to public parks at six and five events, so that way. Uh, the, the park is hard to get that takes place in line as above as possible. Policy. Mayor, do you have any other questions?
Lenworth City Council moves to.
I, I got a question.
You'll have a chance to do that. You go ahead.
Well, no, you go ahead.
Yeah.
Lenworth City Council moves to approve Resolution eighteen dash twenty twenty-five, accepting the park policy, all city parks. Second.
Moved by Mike, seconded by Zeke, and now Sharon, ask your question. Okay, um. I sometimes, I guess, get irritated with the city. On some things.
Oh, good.
And one of them is dogs unleashed. And we're, we say, animals shall not run at large and owners must clean up after their pets. Yeah, right. Um, they're unleashed all the time. I live across the street from Osborne Park. So I see it all the time, um. Dogs are not leashed, hard and raw. And, um, definitely when they get over to the playground area, they're not leashed. And, um, they do not, a lot of people are, they're better now at kicking things up. But, um. I guess when we have rules and we don't enforce them ourselves, that bugs me.
It's just frustrating.
Well, you know, why even have a rule? Just let them run, because they are anyway, nobody's doing anything about it. That's what I don't get.
Okay. Um. I, I think our starting point is to have a policy that clearly defines what we allow and don't allow, and this is from code. Um. Really, this is just reiterating what is already in our code in a way that's more user-friendly for parks users to understand. Um. But I understand your frustration. I, I hear that you're frustrated that people aren't actually following the policy in our parks.
Well, they don't. There are several, uh, codes we have. That, um, nobody ever checks, no overnight parking in city, in the city residential area, right?
During the winter, during winter.
Oh, and so in summer they can?
Oh, yeah. No, no camping's allowed.
Well, they are.
But you can park a vehicle overnight, just can't camp in it.
Okay, I'll lock on their door.
Okay.
Well, you can, you can report it, Sharon.
Yeah.
You can report it.
Who I reported to, the people I reported to already be doing it?
Not if they don't know about it.
It's complaint-based, because they don't know about it.
So who, who would I complain to?
You can complain to the parking department.
The parking department.
Yeah, Shannon and her.
Okay, okay. I will, because they're parked there, especially on weekends, a lot of campers will park there. Or the truck that has the camper, what was it, back of it, is that a camper? Okay, a lot of those.
They, the, the streets are posted, no, no camping. A lot of them, anyway, not all of them, but parking lots are, are posted, no camping.
I don't see any around Osborne.
I have a question about the, the dogs off-leash, so. Who? In the city who forces? Leashes on dogs since he parked, so the animal control. Right, so you, right, so.
And they're not here, then they come from, we have to call the animal control.
Well, we, we don't pay them to come up here, do we?
Right.
I didn't think we did.
They do respond to, um, to complaints during business hours, I believe, when they give their presentation. Uh, a couple of months ago, they said they're, they're, they're eight-five or something like that for their hours of operation.
Oh, I thought we didn't, we paid them a cut rate and they didn't have to do that.
They do respond.
Okay.
They respond more to dangerous dogs.
Dangerous dogs are the off-leash. Right. Because normally by the time they would get here for an off-leash, they wouldn't be there.
Right.
So.
That's why it's just all silly.
Yeah. Well, but you're right, I mean, we, we emphasize all the time that if you're gonna have something, the, the key is enforcement. I mean, that's why. Again, with parking, we started doing the enforcement and, but. In the situation with a dog where we don't have in-house. In the situation with a dog where we don't have in-house.
Authority.
Authority to do or to be there immediately, it is difficult and it is frustrating, but.
Well, I was told that the Sheriff's Department. Does the overnight camping stuff that's on the street, city streets.
They will do the overnight. Um, like the winter stuff, if we. If they see them out there overnight, but I don't know that they do the camping thing, but they do.
By, by contract. They are supposed to be enforcing, assisting with us, with enforcing our code.
Right.
And our code is we don't allow camping on city streets and in parking lots. So the sheriffs. Could help out too.
They're not, yeah, nobody's doing that.
But it is, if it's complaint-driven, I've, I've actually called to myself on bender vehicles and things where cam. And Shannon responded, so that's who I called.
Oh, so call the sheriff, I mean, call Shannon.
Well, something either, either one is appropriate. Yeah, I personally, I mean, it's, it's always tough. We, we don't really want, like. Cops, Shannon, we don't staff the levels of patrol, catch every person who's, I mean, it's like somebody's building a. A fence that's too tall between your property, like, yeah, it's against the law, but you have to complain about it. Maggie's not gonna be driving the streets looking for somebody who's. Doing something that's slightly outside of code, you know, so it kind of necess- necessarily is.
Yeah, well, our parking people, they're not working at night, are they?
They're not, they're, they, they're done.
Yeah. Okay. Just things that bug me.
Well, I, yeah, I'd like to add one more thing, and Sharon, I. I can understand your frustration with the dogs off-leash, and I don't know if maybe it's adding verbiage in our code. Because I know a lot of uh dog owners have, you know, electronic recall, so you don't, you won't necessarily see a leash on them, but they have. A way to recall their, their animal electronically.
My dog's on voice command most of the time. She doesn't need a leash. But I carry a leash with me in case I, if somebody looks like they're uncomfortable, but she doesn't chase people down or anything. She just walks next to me.
Same here. And I think one thing about making, making rules like that are rigid is, so if you have, I, I had a, a group, we got together during COVID. We had dogs that were, we were doing dog training together. And we met down in Chatham Park and we, we had, some of the training was. Voice recall, so, so, you know, we were basically having our dogs off-leash, they had a leash attached, you know, and we were working on training the dogs, so. Technically, if we made a ru- a rule that that's illegal, then. We couldn't do like dog training in the park, you know, or if you wanted to throw a frisbee for your dog or a ball. Yeah, this kind of things is, would be unfortunate if we made some rigid rules about that.
Kuplitski hell.
Yeah. Yeah, no, I don't know, I just see it a lot.
And uh. So I just, it makes me wonder, why do we even bother with a code or? Or, or any of that if we're not going to, before enforcement doesn't. It doesn't take a lot of enforcement and people are, they, the word travels. Anyway.
Well, again, I, I think that the key is behind that is really. You, you don't want dangerous dogs, you don't want a problem. I mean, if, if, if one of those dogs is attacking somebody or goes after a kid, definitely they're gone.
We just wait till they go after a kid?
Well, I'm, I'm just saying that that's the ones that are. That's really where. Enforcement becomes a necessity. You don't, you don't.
I'm sorry.
Okay, park policies. We got. Moved by Mike, seconded by Zeke. Any other? Questions, comments? Seeing none. All those in favor, let me see your hand. Pose. Okay, we've got five to one. Sharon voting against. All right, our next is our USIC contract amendment, again, Andy.
Yes, so um this is amending the contract that we have with USIC, who does all of our voting. And. While it's worded in a confusing way, our goal at the right end is to try to make it a little more, a little bit more clear. Ultimately. This is just revising the way in which the inflation is calculated into the contract. Um, I'm sorry, I'm still not remember. Um. Previously, it was one percent uh. Was, was the trigger, and so the, ultimately, the goal here is to allow for more cost increase for USIC. Uh, as we're seeing inflation larger than what was originally counted for in the contract. Um, in working with USIC, this is what they're. What they're wanting on their side in order to continue with our locating services. Right now, we don't have other contractors that we can use for our locating services, and it's not something that's of priority. In public parks, and it's not something that we want to take back on, so. Um. We're wanting to work with them and continue having that for our locating services.
Questions?
Are these the folks who are gonna determine some of the underground infrastructure on the plaza?
No, well, they just picked out utility locate, so when someone calls eight-one-one. And marks out a area to be located, this is the company that responds on behalf of the city.
They're just, again, doing it for our infrastructure, they're not, he, he does their own.
Oh, this is our infrastructure.
This is for city infrastructure, yeah, so historically, city staff located our own, our own utilities for every eight-one-one call. And then, I don't know.
It's been a couple years that we've been with USIC, it's. Not a lot of money, sorry, I didn't even. I'd hate to look at how much we spend with them.
Well, I think super that, and I wanna say. In my mind, this was less than a thousand dollar increase. We, I purposely put it on the regular agenda versus consent, because I thought it was kind of confusing. And wanted to explain to you all what was happening.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Thanks, Maggie.
Yeah.
Okay, I would entertain a motion.
Leavenworth City Council moves to approve and authorize the mayor to sign an amendment to the contract with. USIC to modify the method by which supplemental annual price increases are assessed. For the utility located within the Leavenworth City limits.
Okay.
Moved by Zeke, seconded by Anne. Any other questions? Seeing none, all those in favor, let me see your hand. Passes unanimously. Um, acceptance of supervisors collective bargaining agreement, Selby.
Thanks, Mayor. Council, uh, you improved in spirit. Uh, changes to this collective bar agreement with the supervisory's unit of Teensers Local seven sixty back in December. Um, we now have before you a redlined uh version of the agreement. Um, we did catch an uh, an error in our last meeting when we were reviewing the non-supervisor agreement, that's been fixed. This is almost identical, there are some um changes, there are some differences uh in that. This is covering just six supervisors, I think it's six, and the other one is covering all the other unit employees. Um, and the on, the uh out-of-class pay uh is also not in this agreement. Um. And I think those are the only substantial changes, or the only substantial uh differences between the agreements and all the. All the things, all the things that we agreed to are codified in redline. It's not a very. Pretty like redline, because I took their final version and I married it through word with what we had from them from three years ago. And just merged documents and word, which is why I didn't produce a beautiful. Redline, but at least I did manage to figure out how to print it as a PDF with redlines. So I learned.
The redlines are in the. I have a question for you.
Yes.
Just a very general document question.
Yeah.
Uh, there's a lot of changes of their T H E I R to just his. Or his slash her, or just.
Yes.
His or her, is there a reason for all of, all of that modification?
Uh, I don't have a reason for that. Um, I can tell you, the first time I did this back in March, I. Saw all those, uh, made the comment to the union, asked them to clean up, I said, we just need to be consistent. It's either their or his slash her, what they gave me back after they did their. Clean up, their cleanup, there are still some issues with the pronouns. I've raised that to them in a labor management meeting last Wednesday. They will clean it up and have it consistent as his or um in the final document.
Why not her?
So this is not the final?
This, they considered the changing of the pronouns to be just a scripter's error. Um, and they said after this has been approved, they will change it on their side.
Leavenworth City Council moves to authorize the mayor to sign the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-seven supervisor unit collective bargaining agreement previously ratified in concept by the council.
Second. Moved by Mike, seconded by Zeke. Any other questions? Seeing none, all those in favor, let me see your hand. Passes unanimously. That's the last of our action items.
Motion?
Huh?
There are two motions with that?
Oh, there's two motions, yes.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Leavenworth City Council moves to ratify any actions by the city taken after January first, twenty twenty-five, that are. Consistent with the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-seven supervisor unit collective bargaining agreement.
Second. Moved by Shane, seconded by Mike.
I have questions about this.
Okay.
How does this play out, since it's basically retroactive, right? What, what sort of, what sort of adjustments are we gonna see over the course of the last five plus months?
This is something that our attorney uh asked me to have you guys approve. I didn't go through and do an analysis of what. What we may have done and the actions the city may have taken, but the one thing we did do was approve the hours schedule, for example.
Mm-hmm.
Um, which I think we did. About, I think we did that after the agreement had been ratified and printed.
So, will staff be getting retroactive pay?
No, there's no, everybody's been, we've been, we have been.
Acting in good faith under this.
Us, putting the pay plan.
So ratifying it, we really won't see. Anything coming through that we.
Change.
Have to.
Right.
Okay.
Any other questions? All right, all those in favor, let me see your hand. Passes unanimously. And now we're done with our action items and reports, Sharon.
Eventually I get to it. All right. On May twenty eighth, I went to the Cascade High School Project Citizens Judging. And um. I certainly, you guys have done that before. Dwayne Allen, it's always fun to watch him because he graduated with one of my kids. And I can think of some, I haven't seen him like me, not to mention. Um, on May twenty eighth, um, oh wait, wrong, excuse me. On May twenty ninth, there was a spring tea put together by the Upper Valley Historical Society. It was held at the Grange Hall. You wouldn't have recognized the Grange Hall. They totally transformed that into a really, really nice room with flowers and. And it was a really good day, um, good meeting. On the thirtieth, Chantel came over to my house because I couldn't get uh into the. City website, and um I did it today by myself because I did it again, so I feel pretty smart.
Good job.
On June second, the Solid Ways um. Council met, and um I'm just gonna read you a couple of those things. Um, vice chair election, Sean Smith is now the chair after serving as vice chair for the last year. Sean Smith. Made a motion and Jim Fletcher, the mayor of Cashmere, is vice chair. Um, an apple nugget update. Since, since the closure of the Leavenworth Brush, Brush Yard, Shalane County has had a few calls from residents in Leavenworth. Asking about the closure, but most people have been understanding as to the reasoning. And the ID required policy have been implemented for brush drop-off at Dryden Transfer Station. This is no, this is to better ensure the customers are not bringing our waste from the quarantine area. The sign-in sheet for contractors have also been implemented, which records the contractor's business name, contractor's employee's name. And job site address. Um, Shalane County recently did a cleanup at the Malaga Campment area. So I'm just gonna read a little uh short thing here. Shalane County has been checking back on the Malaga encampment area a few times since cleanup. Occasionally, some trash is being picked up. A camp at the south end of Wenatchee at Squelchuck Creek was cleaned up. By the county recently. The county is keeping track of reports of camps under the Monitor Bridge, Plain Bridge. And at the bottom of the Hum Canyon. And um. They didn't realize that we were collecting glass up here, so I informed them that we were. Uh, before we closed down, before there would be people that would come, purple Wenatchee would block the boxes of, of uh. You know, uh wine bottles and things like that, so it, it lucrative, if you can do it. Uh, we're in by solid ways. On June fourth, um, we had, oh wait, I'm sorry, June second, we had a mosquito board interviews for two positions. One interview was in the morning and one in the afternoon. That was June second. On the fourth, follow-up mosquito board meeting and executive session. Um, our meeting resulted in Nick Parton, Parton was hired as a mosquito controls specialist. One, Washington State Range fifty-three, and Cassie Hendricks as an environmental specialist, three. Washington State Range three. Last night, the Shalane County Behavioral Health Unit gave a presentation here in this room. And um, I hate to say this, but I was embarrassed because there was hardly anybody there. There were way, probably four times as many officers and whatever there than um. And we were, so, you know, I don't know. Um. They um were emphasizing the many ways to talk to children who have. Themselves or their friends had a disturbing situation. These children could be younger or older. This is. Of course prompted by the recent murders of the three young children in Wenatchee were murdered by their father. Um, it was really, I thought, a really good meeting with a lot of good information and not only, you know, talking about. Death with a child, but, you know, other things with your kids or grandkids or great-grandkids, whatever the case might be, so. I wish that there were more people there so that Leavenworth was showing up for something. Uh, you know, here. But I know there was a couple other meetings going to, anyway, thanks for listening.
No, it wasn't this time.
Yeah?
Economic Development Committee met last week to go over the Leavenworth Fund application materials and our scoring sheet. Uh, to. Better focus the language and make our review process a lot more streamlined, but also more so to make. Uh, it work there for applicants, um, how we are going to be reviewing them, making it really clear on the review criteria, that sort of thing, so. We hope to get those um applications live at the beginning of July.
Um, we'll have two things. First thing, on June second, uh, my son defended his doctorate for Thising the Properties of the Ocean and got his doctorate, so that was pretty cool.
Pretty cool, yeah.
And uh just shout out for the Bike and Brew that shows up this weekend on the fourteenth and fifteenth. I don't know how many. Likely candidate participants are here, but it's gonna happen and might be just good to show up there, so.
I heard the thirteen, fourteen, and fifteen.
Yeah, oh, that's right, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, okay.
What is it?
Bike and Brew, they're bringing the Bike and Brew back.
Oh, so you get drunk and ride a bike?
Okay, that's only one of the adventures.
So it says, fruit, doesn't matter, fruit rides, but.
Leisure class lives on.
Yeah. Right, that's the end of my report, thank you.
Uh, I also attended the economic development meeting last week, um. Uh, Anne gave a good update on that, but uh I will say that uh Selby and Courtney Porter uh kind of. Pitched an idea to us about um some software that might help make their jobs a little bit easier, but organizing the. Applications and score sheets, so excited to see if that moves forward. Um, last night I attended a, a meeting put on by Matt Lyons of Tread, um. This was a, like a stakeholder meeting to identify impacts to. Public lands uh as a result of the lack of funding provided to the Forest Service to manage these spaces. Um. Some of the attendees included a. Members from uh the Leavenworth Mountain Association, Suzanne McMillan, formerly from the Forest Service, uh. Some city representatives and uh Canucci from W R I. Uh, and others, uh, we just kind of collaborated on ways to reduce the impact of recreation users, uh mainly up the icicle. And in the enchantment uh areas uh near the core zone, um. And I'd like to do a, a quick plug for the uh Leavenworth Bavarian Adult Nick Softball League, uh as I'm commissioner, we are starting our. League up next, uh, next week. We play every Monday, Tuesday night uh from six to nine o'clock, so. You guys are looking for something to do, come down and watch the softball. We play until the end of August. Where? Down in Enchantment Park.
Very cool.
That's the end of my report. All right. My, my report is the, the Tred meeting as well, I was there and it was great collaboration. Hopefully we get some traction and help and protect our resources, our city water is uh pretty awesome right now and I'd love to see it stay that way. As well as just this beautiful scenery up there in the mountains, uh, other than that, I have nothing to add.
Thank you, yeah, I too was at that Tred meeting. Um, we'll be following up, I actually do have, I came away right, promising to meet with Erica Ticker from the Forest Service and we are scheduled to meet on Thursday. Um, see what level of volunteers they might allow um to help out. I don't know how many, but they've gone from eight wilderness rangers to one um. And uh basically no way to enforce the permit prompt. And nothing um and um, if trends continue as they have, we're gonna, we'll see bigger crowds with by this film. And uh, yeah, and so uh again, it was a good meeting, a good start. A lot of committed people, a lot of willing people to help out. Um, so we'll see if we can get some traction and help to mitigate um. Yeah. A horrendous situation in my mind. Um, otherwise, um, next week, uh, I get to go back to Selby's old stomping grounds and he's sharing a bunch of things for me to do, I'm going back to, to have spent some time with my special needs grandson and go bachelor my son in his life and get to spend several days um in his new school environment back there in Boston area, so looking forward to that.
So thanks, Mayor, um, after our presentation from uh John Sutherland about licensing Mirror Town for the production of a musical, he reached out, uh, reached out to our city attorney, uh, they, and asked me this something that's within their wheelhouse or if I should reach out to someone else. I reached out to someone else. So uh I have engaged um Ethan Vody. He used to be with Lee Hayes, he now has his own firm called Ethan Vody I um IP intellectual property, he's out of Spokane. We've worked closely with Ethan on the trademark dispute uh around Leavenworth Doctor over fast. Um, so I, I've signed an agreement with him to move forward and I'll keep you updated as, as a licensing agreement is developed by Ethan for us. Um, I've been attending river recreation meetings with the county, the chamber, different stakeholders. Uh, we had one pretty long meeting uh yesterday to discuss the closure of the fish hatchery, which is still on schedule to be closed uh after June thirtieth, the end of sport fishing season. Uh, we had county public works there, we had some property owners on that call as well, discussing the impacts. We have a shuttle, uh Wenatchee Valley Shuttle was on the call discussing the route, how they're gonna pick people up, drop people off. Um, Dave Johnson, at one point in time, at, from Leavenworth Outdoor Center, did have his operation at East Leavenworth Boat Ramp and gave us some recommendations of how to park cars. Uh, we're gonna be enlisting Pacific Security patrols to help us with um parking cars at the, at the takeout as well as um helping us uh with uh with river traffic and put in uh at the Iceville Bridge. And uh we'll have those guys out there in, in concert with the shuttle start uh July fourth. Um, and we heard from the county today that the River Recreation Parking Lot Conditional Use Permit Application is progressing. The county has uh issued a, a notice of application. Uh, the property will be posted tomorrow and there's a comment period. Um, the, the county will be accepting comments through June twenty sixth, so this uh project is is lining its way through the conditional use permit process.
What property was that?
This is the Norling Lane.
Above the bridge?
Right, up by the Iceville Bridge.
For parking lot for the.
Mean though, or there are those two things?
Those two parks, those two parcels.
Oh, and so do we town one of them?
So we have a person sale due for the whole site, the one and a half acres, and we have a concept of a parking lot that would have fifty cars.
Okay. I thought the guy took it back or something?
No, no, we had discussed, he had discussed doing the boundary line adjustment, which kind of delayed us as he worked his way through that process. And we decided that it would be advantageous for the city and him if we controlled the whole uh area.
Did you say city, city and him?
Yeah.
It's okay, but we've had the two.
Both, both lots are under, are under personal sale right now.
So we have a question, and in those river recreation meetings that you've been having, has there been any concern about um overflow parking or like? Yeah, at the um fishermen's access along East Leavenworth Road, once they closed access to the fish.
That has been, you talking about the fish and wildlife access on Leavenworth Road, yeah, that's, that is being talked, discussed as that's where people will go.
Right.
Um, that is another likely location, um, but they're allowed to do it, so. Um, we're, I'm not planning on managing that parking lot, it's not our asset.
Yeah.
Um, I'm focusing our resources on, on properties that we own. Um, and running and operating the shop.
So who, remind me again, whose recommendation was it to close parking at the fish hatchery?
That's a fish hatchery.
It's the fish hatchery's decision. Yeah, by the complex manager.
But you can still launch from there.
You can still walk through the property, the property is still open.
Right.
But um the parking lot, which accommodates three hundred plus vehicles will be closed.
Okay, thank you, yeah, thanks, Selby.
What was the reason for that?
Uh, they're down staff by over sixty percent and tubing access is not their core mission, their core mission is fish.
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
I just have a quick update, yeah, our planning commission hearing last week for the um changes to our A D U code. Um, we did not have any attendees at that meeting and that will be coming forward to the council next month.
Maybe I could ask you a question on the Nexus Study.
Yeah, it's still, I don't have any takers, so it's moving forward like slowly.
Good, are we thinking about raising the fee that we'll pay them?
I think we, we either have to do that based on the feedback I received.
Okay.
Or uh start with just a feasibility study only. And then.
Okay, I think I'll talk to you later on that one.
Yeah.
I would like to know some information.
That'd be great, thank you.
Good deal.
Um, all the annual reports are done, yeah. Chantel's gonna take the next two weekends, those long weekends, before the audit starts on June twenty third.
Oh, I got called last week.
I know you did.
Thanks for sending him my direction.
He sees me on every email with you.
I figured he'd let you know.
Yes, I, I have that same similar type of process happen and the mayor also does. And they'll get Selby too, when they get here on site. But, yeah, uh, uh, audit's starting, so we'll be ready. Uh, your annual report will be in your consent agenda packet next week.
All right.
You got any more to say? I, I, quick uh update, uh, so today we had a pre-con meeting for the Icicle Road Transmission Project, the new water main. Basically from Mill out past the golf course at the bridge, uh, that effort is gonna be starting on June twenty third. Uh, they're gonna start at Mill Street and work their way back towards the roundabout and then start heading down uh Icicle Road, mainly they're trying to get off Highway two or traffic gets too bad, but it's already bad. That's the goal, you know?
Before he has worms, you can always say it's worms.
Um, yeah, so just to give a pool update, and there's uh some questions about the pool, so uh there are multiple projects that we took on at the pool this year. Uh, happy to report that some of them are complete, some are not. Um, so one of the big things that we did accomplish was in the locker room, uh we replaced all the floor with uh an epoxy, and I don't know if you've been in there, but it, it looks really good, it's a lot more functional. Uh, the zero entry, I, it was supposed to be finished today, uh and in order to finish filling up the pool, the product actually has a seven day period time on it. You'll learn, this is kind of the name of the pool, uh. The other big piece though, that ultimately is our critical path right now is we currently can't backwash. So we have the two new filters, they were installed, uh there was a contractor error in installing the valve in there. So Brantley has been putting a lot of time towards finding a path forward, both um with our current contractor and actually getting them back out to do that work. But also simultaneously uh preparing to bring in a third party, so we're, I think we're on their schedule, is that correct, to come out? So basically what we're getting here the fastest is who would report, but uh we're very much still targeting May twentieth. Nope, June, sorry, I wrote May, I wrote May everywhere in my notes, that's not. Uh, which would be the day that we turn the pool over to the pool staff, but then it opening to the public on the twenty first. We're gonna learn a lot more on Thursday, I think is the day our contractor was supposed to be here. Uh, but again, Brantley has been putting in a lot of time and effort into really pushing them to get back out and affect this work. Uh. And unfortunately, what it is, what was that?
At no cost.
Oh, yeah, also liquidated damages.
Yeah. You got a big hammer, it's good. Yeah.
Yeah. Um. And, and at the end of the day, like this is, there's a lot of components to this filter project. We had a lot of different people pointing fingers at one another for how the mistake happened, but at the end of the day, it's the contractor's responsibility to install something that we can backwash.
Right.
And right now, because there are two valves that are non-sell, we can't. So we can only clean the pool so much, uh, as our, as our filters are clogging without being able to backwash. The other piece is once that is fully installed, then our utilities crew needs time to finish with the chemicals and balancing the pool. Uh. One of the other challenges of that too is that right now, the way the backwash system is working is it's just pushing that water out instead of actually flooding the media so it properly back washes. So it's not worthwhile for us to put a ton of time and um ultimately letting chemicals into the pool, if that's now just. So we are working together to try to open it as quickly as possible, but I know that's not the news anyone wants, not the news that any of us want to be sharing with you, but that's a wrap.
So the twentieth is pool staff and the twenty first is the whole pool opening?
That's the goal, but again, we'll learn more this Thursday.
Wow.
We're gonna finish the meeting on a downer.
Oh, I have two, no, don't worry, I'll finish on something, not on, but a different note at least, uh. I did just wanna bring to your attention that we do have two, two topics at our next meeting that are, so our entire study session is going to be dedicated to sidewalks and removal policy, so get ready, um.
I'm so excited.
Yeah, and then uh the other thing that we're gonna be talking about, we'll have a, another utility rate discussion as part of the regular council meeting, just because it's pretty light, um.
So there's a lot of points you this month.
You have no summer fun.
Is it bad that I think these are fun, I think you did a different topic, I thought that was a positive note to end on.
I know, I can delete that one, I'm so excited.
I do just wanna be absolutely sure that I'm meeting your needs in this discussion, so we'll have this discussion at the council meeting and then another study session as well. For the utility rate study, my big picture takeaway is that I just noted from my last meeting were a one to two page uh simplified document that summarizes the findings of the utility rate study. Looking at how we can spread the cost increase over time. Um, I wrote down just getting more information on how long we've been deficient in our monitoring utility rates. And then bringing some actual bills that show on a low, medium, high, both. Is, I just wanna check in and make sure that's in line with what you all are wanting as we continue with the discussion for the utility rate study.
Well, there's one thing I, we mentioned was that we wanted some specific projects that this raised rate was gonna go to.
Yeah.
What the costs of those projects are gonna be, so that you be a.
Yeah, and I nailed that up, but I will include it in the.
Okay.
Yeah, I think that would be helpful, and as you're, as you're looking for ways to maybe spread this out a little bit over time, so it's a little more palatable for the community. What that, how, how that impacts the projects that need to get done. Absolutely. Okay, otherwise that's kind of on.
That's what, that sounds good.
I, I had a thought, I, I'm not a huge spreadsheet guy or you know, uh formula guy, but, but it sounds like it could be simple to take uh formula and make like plug in, this is how much water I used last year in June. Add plug it into a formula and say, this is what my bill is gonna be this year if I use the same amount of water. I don't know if that's a tool we can do, I mean, there's a frequently asked question saying that you set out, it might be coming up, maybe spot or, or just so, I think being blindsided by the bills is what's gonna scare, is what's scary, people not knowing, and if you can just say, well, plug it in here and you'll have your answer.
Yeah, we did talk about doing that and putting it on the website. But it's not as simple as one would think.
Okay.
Because you've got four to five different side meters that drive different base rates. And then you have different tiers, whether you're residential, multifamily or commercial. So it yeah, I mean, I, we thought about the simplistic one, we're like, oh, we could just use a very corporate version of it. But then you're gonna get the other people go, but I wanna know what my bill is.
Yeah.
And so it, it's kind of a tough one.
I mean, I can definitely build it as like a really rudimentary Excel spreadsheet that someone could download and just like click, like, okay, this is my type of meter, and so I have, this is my usage of my most recent bill.
Yeah.
Um, it's not, if I do it, it's not pretty, it's like really.
Yeah.
Um, do you think that would be helpful?
If it's, if it's easy, I think that would be nice to steer people towards that, but if it, if it's super complicated, you know? You know, and what I don't want is people to get the wrong answer because they can't figure it out and then that's defeats the purpose, but.
I don't think it's complicated. But I live in Excel.
Yeah.
And the average person does not, I I was just surprised the other day, I sent out the lodging facts and tax reports and this person came back and asked fourteen questions. Because they didn't realize, oh, there's terms at the bottom with different taxes and, yeah, they just don't use Excel.
Right.
So I think if we do design something, and Karen was talking with me about it and putting it on the website, it would be as simple as you said. Plug in, this is what my, my gallons were last year, this is what my gallons are this year. This was what my bill was last year and it'll actively tell you what your bill will be this year.
And next.
But it's just about equity and maybe we can get that.
Okay. If you, if you come up with a great idea, that'd be nice.
The concept for the Excel, I just don't know how to do on the website, but yeah, I mean, it's gonna be. Get that lady like a, just download an Excel and have a simple coverage.
Okay. I think the, the associate I sent you was calling ones made up. Maybe, maybe Kevin and I just bumped the numbers, we were plugging the formulas.
And I could even just hide it, so you can often see like the re-balancing.
Yeah, it's easy to do.
Okay.
Hey, that's my positive note, sorry, thank you.
Uh, my red entertainment motion adjourned.
I'm adjourned.
Second, second, all those in favor? It's, you know.
FYI, Highway two is closed. Everybody gives out hard ones, and you know the coverage with the.